I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, July 26. If you please rise and pay your respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we note the roll?
Noted.
Item four, approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
I second it.
It's been moved by Mr. Hunwick, seconded by Mr. Nold. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item five, approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting dated June 14, 2018.
All support.
Been moved by Mr. Nold, seconded by Mr. Hunwick. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item number six, public comments on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak? Yes, sir. Please come up to lectern. You've got three minutes. You can address anything to me, the commissioner, chairman, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay. You almost make it sound like a competition, the way you say that. Anyway, Bruce Myers, Tulano, Oxford Township, Michigan. I read an article from CJ's paper, and I'm sure it's accurate, but it seems like we have approved a few hundred thousand dollars for a center for recreation for us old people. That's nice. I think we had addressed that before with a vote, public vote, where funds had been denied for that type of a use. I want to know how this came about. I don't remember coming in front of the planning commission, and it's a significant amount of money. And unfortunately CJ did not address an article about how this is going to be paid for each and every year in terms of maintenance, expected cost, staffing, and this seems like a significant outlay, especially when this is being placed in a corner of the township away from the general source of population. You know, I could see it someplace like on Gillespie Street or someplace where it'd be a central location for people to get to, but this is kind of on the outskirts. It's actually going to be serving our surrounding communities almost better than it is our own community in township. So I'd like to have some answers in terms of what this is going to cost on an annual basis as well as immediate basis, staffing, maintenance. I imagine there's no loss of tax revenue because there'll be a township park, but there's a lot of money involved here. How did you guys get left out of the loop? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on topics not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Move on to item number seven, commissioner comments. Mr. Nold?
I have no comment.
Mr. Hunwick?
I have no comments.
Ms. Rosner?
Yeah, I had emailed you the comments from earlier, just if we could have a discussion at some point on the sign ordinance. I know we've talked about some of the amendments and stuff, and I see all these little signs that look like campaign signs, but they're advertising daycare and those kind of things. Those aren't allowed, are they? The old temporary ones in the amendments, like advertising schools and stuff?
According to our ordinance, it doesn't look that way.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's just we need to work on the sign ordinance. So I was just questioning all those, so I manage to, we see that, we just call that in.
Exactly. I was going to say, I read through 9.4, E through U, and P, 9.10, and there was nothing that referenced what you're discussing. So, yeah, the best thing to do at this point is to call it in to the ordinance violation officer, excuse me, and state that there's a violation, because there is nothing in that ordinance that says, you know, you rent this or you rent that, it's allowed.
I probably noticed this by the back of the hand. The sign content legislation and all that, the court thing, how did that address political signs? They're still allowed to have temporary political signs, and we can regulate temporary political signs, right?
Yeah, there's a, there's a good variety, actually, of temporary signs that are allowed, that are permitted.
Yeah, so as long as it's political and all that, within that time period, it's okay, but other signs that look like political signs, we can regulate, and those are not, we can be allowed?
It depends. I mean, there's like event and festival signs that are permitted also that are temporary. There's a, the ordinance is really clear about it, about what exactly is allowed or regulated.
Yeah, so I think what you're saying is just the enforcement happening.
Well, I saw, and you think they're political because they look like it, and then you realize, that's not a political sign, that's for something else.
Yep.
And then, and I got a bunch of feedback for the legacy. I know we talked before about the sign, the flag, and it's a contentious topic for a lot of people, and I got a lot of negative feedback about it, that it shouldn't be used for advertising, and they perceive that as being a commercial purpose. And, you know, I don't know how that's addressed in ordinance. I know there's no real clear-cut laws one way or the other, but I don't know. On one hand, it's nice to see, and on the other hand, I can see how some people would be thinking it's commercial and being used wrong. That was all I had on that.
For me, last night I attended the One Stop event down in Oakland County. The focus of that was investor receptions, according to their look at the townships and cities and whatnot. Basically, a few takeaways that I think that we're already moving in that direction. One was to make sure that you're user-friendly in what you're doing with your ordinances, with your doing with your building department, the approach, reduce the hurdles. There was also a point, many points made about the younger generations seeking mixed-use applications, more so than traditional-type zonings. And then they all spoke about the pre-application process being absolutely a need. It helps them out quite a bit, and it eliminates a lot of problems for people, I guess, for the township, for the building department, and also for the customer or the investors. So, that was pretty good. That's about it from my end. Let's move to number eight, public hearings.
Do you want me to open?
Yes. Well, you know, actually, let's, um...
Let's go with this here.
Okay. So I think that's...
You're right.
Yeah?
Presentations?
Right. So, the first one is the section 18.2, amendment procedure for adding the criteria that should be evaluated by the planning commission and township board before acting on a rezoning petition. The intent of this amendment is to provide guidance to both township officials and applicants on important land use factors relating to rezonings. A minor amendment to section 18.3 requires a petitioner to write written responses to rezoning criteria as part of the rezoning application submittal. The second one is for text amendments to Article II, adding definitions to add solar energy systems. And number three is the addition of a new section for energy solar systems to clarify purpose, feasibility, types of systems, general requirements, and other approvals required. So I believe we are our own petitioner, so perhaps you can give just a quick synopsis of what we're trying to accomplish with each of these?
Actually, I think that that...
Pretty what, does it? Nothing else there?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, then now I'll look for an item number two.
I move to open the public hearing for discussion of the proposed amendments to zoning ordinance 67A. That'll be one, two, and three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Nold, seconded by Mr. Hunwick. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes. We'll open the public hearing for these three sections. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to speak on any of the three changes or additions, you're welcome to come up to the podium. You have three minutes to speak your, your mind. Please give us your name and your address when you do so. Doesn't look like there's anyone in the public wishing to speak on those three.
Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
I will support.
It's been moved by Mr. Nold, seconded by Mr. Hunwick to close. Any discussion on the motion?
We didn't receive any communications from anybody either.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Let's move to item five of this section, comments from township consultants and staff or commissioners. We've all read this once before, or a couple times before, really, some of us more often than that. Any other comments to add? There was no additional correspondence to these that was given to me, so we can move to item number eight.
Then I recommend, based on the draft zoning ordinance text dated June 29, 2018, received from the township planner and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, I move that the planning commission recommend to the township board approval of the following zoning ordinance text amendments. Item number one, amendment to Article 18, Section 1 through 4, finding for the rezoning as amended. Item number two, amendments to Article 2, definition to solar energy systems. And item number three, additions to the new section, solar energy systems to clarify the purpose, types of system, and general requirements for all other approved requirements.
All support.
It's been moved by Mr. Nold, seconded by Mr. Hunwick. Is there any discussion on the motions?
Just general discussion. I thought I'd asked a question before. On page two of the zoning amendment, the very first line is five and talks about the criteria, and it says, "The proposed amendment will not have a limited impact on public services." I thought it was supposed to get negative or something. I'm not understanding what limited impact was.
Are you asking me?
Yeah. Could anyone else ask me that question, too?
No, no problem. That was one of the changes that Don and I made after the meeting, after the discussion that I referenced the other day in the email, was with the strict compliance of the phrase "not have a negative impact," that could very broadly be used to prove a negative impact, whereas really the intent of this ordinance is to have a limited impact, whereas there may be some room for flexibility in the intensity of the impact.
Whether it's negative or not.
Right.
I'm not understanding what it means then. Proposed amendment will not have a limited impact?
Well, I think actually "not" should be scratched there. That should be the...
That's, I kept reading it.
The proposed amendment will have a limited impact, is I think, yeah.
Thank you. I kept not understanding what it was trying to say.
Yeah.
So the word "not" needs to come off.
The word "not" needs to come off, yeah, thank you.
I know we worked around with the wording, and it didn't look like what we had...
Will have a limited impact, yes.
Discuss. Thank you, because I was trying to figure out, as we were discussing this at a future meeting, what that meant, and not knowing how we're going to go from there. I would consider rescinding the motion.
Right. Is there anything else before we do that?
No, that was that big one I saw.
Then I'd like to add to that a condition, the word "not" be removed from the limited impact.
Absolutely.
Resupport? Yeah, I know, do we have to define that, where it's at more, or we're just...
Page two, line five?
C5.
The condition will be to remove the word "not" be, excuse me. The condition is to remove the word "not" from 18.2C5, so the proposal amendment will have a limited impact on the public service utility or ropes.
That'll support.
And just for comment, just typographical error correction, so I don't think it would apply that we would need another hearing or anything like that.
Yep.
Contextual error.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I think that needs to be...
Seeing none?
Oh, is it a roll call?
Yeah, let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Nold?
Approve.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunwick? Yes. Commissioners Young?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So we move on to item nine, unfinished business, which there is none. Let's go to item 10, new business, the settlement of Manitowoc proposed second and third amendments to the site condominium documents. Do we have the petitioner here? Nobody from the HOA? Okay.
Can we postpone it or table it till the next week? See if they can...
I know.
This actually came out of Treasurer Ferrari's office initiated, because it's property that they were giving to them and stuff, or however, I don't know, but it came from the treasurer's office. And they've been walked through a lot of this. I don't even think them showing up, that they would even understand what they were going to talk about, because this was handled mostly internally.
It looked like housekeeping to me.
It's all housekeeping, and we're just cleaning it up so that they're not, the property can get where it's supposed to be.
Right.
It's the slower that was wrong.
Everything's established, and they're, the two parcels are...
And it's housekeeping really from our end that we're having them do.
So everybody knows what's happening. The two parcels are being added for general use. It's got to go into the deep. One property line's being shifted, I don't know, five feet or something like that.
Not very far.
Correct. And it's the last vacant, which is actually not vacant. Yes.
My question is, the lot line's already been reported at the county. How did the lot line get changed and reported at the county without going through the township first? And are the procedures in place that are supposed to not let that happen? And I'm confused. I guess I'll start with that and go from there.
You'd have to consult with the county. County deed registration do not talk to equalization, so we have no control. It happens all the time with the county procedure, not us.
Who made the lot line adjustment?
County.
On its own?
No, they, I don't know. They recorded it.
I guess my question is, how does an applicant go in and just change their lot line without getting township approval?
Well, apparently, the applicant is the township, correct?
No, the applicant is managed to...
I mean, but they're not the one bringing this here.
You can take your deed in, you can take your deed in and register your deed at any time, no matter what it says. Then all of a sudden, it kicks into equalization and doesn't match up, or some along the line of flag hits. Then equalization ships it back to the township, and then they got to come in and clean it up for the township. So you, anybody can go and record your deed, they're not going to match up with equalization until you get ready to do something. It's county, it's a county procedure, we cannot control them.
But the lot line adjustment is a lot, that's a change that would have to be approved by the township, because we're the ones that would approve that. It's a lot split, configuration or adjustment.
And that's come to the township already, now, since it's been brought to our attention.
So we're correcting that?
That's what this...
No?
Correct. And that's what...
Right, I guess my question is, how did the county record it? Was it said it was approved at the township level and it wasn't?
No, they don't ask that question. Two different departments. You can take a deed down, they don't care who we are.
But a deed isn't a lot line configuration.
It is, it's a change of the deed in their title.
So I can take the deed down that changes my lot line configuration and file it with the county?
Yes, you can.
And they will change my lot line configuration without any approval from the township?
It has nothing to do with equalization, but equalization will catch up with it.
And that's when it comes back to us.
I just wanted to be clear that the two additional parcels were...
Were they meant to be there before?
Well, no, that doesn't bother me as much as at some later point in time, they can add density to those.
Right, and I thought that was...
And I think it was pretty clear, at least I read it, that it's not supposed to increase density whatsoever.
Um, correct.
Like, they can't sneak a little...
The proposed modification does not alter existing unit density, nor impact the lot lines.
Is it written on those lots that they're not buildable?
It's written on the, right in it, that they're not...
In the deed that they're not buildable?
Right. That they're for public, I don't know what the phrase is, public use or whatever.
Open space?
Open green space.
Permanently preserved or...
Exactly.
I guess the whole thing, I'm still trying to figure out how it happened, because if we can figure out how it happened, we can prevent it from happening.
Talk to trustee, or talk to the Treasurer Ferrari.
It says general use, general common elements.
No, no, I'm talking about the whole lot line thing, and I understand how this other...
Yeah, but they can't use the property for anything other than what it's intended for.
Right.
Any other discussion on these two?
Then I make a motion that the planning commission approve the proposed second and third amendments to the site condominium, site plan, and documents for the existing settlement of Manitowoc site condominium development. The second amendment involves a minor unit boundary adjustment between units 30, partial ID 0435, 351030, and unit 31, partial 0435, 351-031, while the third amendment adds two vacant parcels, 0435, 300016, and 017, to the property for use as general common elements. This recommendation of approval is based on the finding that the proposed amendments to the site plan and documents have already been recorded with the Oakland County Register of Deeds and is consistent with the compatibility of the master plan, adjustment zoning districts, and adjacent land uses.
That's it?
All support.
Are we adding the comments from the planner about the spellings of the, is there a problem with spelling? Is incorrect spelling to Manitou Lane and Manitou Lake with an exhibit B?
Yeah, that was it.
It's just administratively that those get, we know that those could change. Page three.
Do we need to put that as a condition?
I don't think so.
Well, if it's incorrect, we should...
Well, it does say additions to be addressed, within exhibit B provided...
Then I'll add to that a condition, that the spelling be corrected, and the correct spelling is M-A-N-I-T-O-U.
Resupport?
All support.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion will pass. Let's move to new business, item B, final site plan for Seymour Lake Road Township Park. Is the petitioner here?
Kind of knew that, but I thought I'd take a stab at you were.
What's that?
I kind of knew you were, but I thought I'd take a stab.
Yeah, I'm Ron Davis, Parks and Rec Director, and this is Jeff Kinnis, our park superintendent. We are presenting a request to approve the amended site plan to include Phase 2 and 3, and then the pavilion and warming building at your Seymour Lake Township Park. Phase 2 and 3 is a single-story, 6,136-square-foot building and extension to the current community center. The site plan notes reflect a 5,594-square-foot extension, but the Oxford Community television station has increased their section to 3,010 square feet. We are requesting the additional 542 square feet, and that the planning commission allow administrative review with that addendum, amendment, I'm sorry. As far as your pavilion and warming building, it'll be located south end of Seymour Lake Township Park where the back bathrooms are at. When Mr. Broshue wrote a grant back in 93, it was supposed to be included, but he didn't, for some reason, he didn't follow through with it. So that back bathroom will have a pavilion attached to it with a concession stand, which would be a warming center. It'll increase the footprint of the developed area by 3,840 square feet. We're requesting that a waiver be given to us for the eight-foot-wide safety path along Seymour Lake Road. We're using bond money for this, and at this time, until the Safety Path Committee that I used to chair determines where the best location to come into that park would be, it would be fiscally irresponsible of all of us as community leaders to put a path in that leads, I can tell you right now, I don't want it between our split rail fence and Seymour Lake Road. That's not a safe access. So to put one there, that would just be fiscally irresponsible on our part, so...
Can you hear the path, where, which section?
On Seymour Lake Road, at Seymour Lake Township Park. So it would be my, you know, if you've all been to the park, it needs to come in by Kids' Kingdom. At this time, you know, I don't, until they get it there, there's no sense of spending that money and wasting it, so...
Where do you want it to come in? I didn't hear it.
By Kids' Kingdom Playground. Get the kids off the road, so...
Aren't we required to have a safety path going along the...
It's been noted when we did our community center.
But as far as between the road and the property, along Seymour Lake Road, anyway?
That's what he's asking for the waiver, but...
Right, but you're talking about going into the park.
That's the destination.
Yeah, but doesn't, the safety paths aren't designed just for destinations to the parks.
No, but it would be, we would tie off of it. I'm saying, you wouldn't want it between the split rail fence and the road anyways. You're going to, we're in the right of way, so it's going to be close to the senior, that community area. You're going to have it on the south side of Seymour Lake Road, and you're going to have it close to our split rail, you'd be on the inside of our split rail fence.
I guess, doesn't the safety path have to go all the way to the ball road?
Well, it will eventually, but why put it in now when we haven't got it past Dunlop? I mean, that just doesn't make financial sense. And if you guys know me, I'm pretty frugal with funds, so...
You're talking about, okay, so you're not talking about just where it's going into the park, you're talking about...
No, I'm saying along the front of the Seymour Lake Township Park.
So he's asking for a waiver for that.
Yeah, yeah, I get, got it.
So that's what we're looking for tonight. So I'll be, Jeff and I will be happy to answer any questions. We're ready to get going on the sing-alike tonight to start. I mean, it's go time.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Since I'm on the OCTV board, am I, I should be recusing myself from this particular issue? Is there a conflict?
No, because you're approving, you're approving the site plan.
You're approving the site plan.
And it's not, because anybody can go in that spot, it's four corners. You're approving the four corners, anybody can go into that site.
Even though it's earmarked for OCTV, it doesn't matter?
At this time, it is, but it might fall through, and you might not do it. You're approving the four corners, phase 1, 2, and, well, you did phase 1, 2, 3, and the concessions.
Okay, just asking the question.
I know, we had this discussion in the office, but yeah.
And actually, it's two separate items, if I may, Deanna. It's the pavilion, warming center, skating rink. We're building a skating rink, so I need the pavilion and the warming center. Okay, and then the senior center and OCTV, or in that footprint, those four corners.
Square footage.
Yes.
Square footage.
Okay, why don't we check in on the comments from the township consultants and staff? Mr. Sharp?
Well, we prepared the plans on behalf, you know, for Mr. Davis there, so obviously we're meeting the township requirements. There are a couple things in Lauren's letter that I can address when she gets to it, but as far as, you know, the stormwater needs, we're addressing that. We did show the safety path on the plan, which Mr. Davis is asking for the waiver on, you know, meets all the setback requirements and so forth. We got paved parking areas, so I guess I'd just be happy to answer any other questions that you may have. We have, one more thing, we have met with the Oakland County Health Department and the septic field that was put in along Seymour Lake Road for the administrative offices when we redid that last year. It was built to a size that would accommodate all these facilities up front, and likewise, we met with Mr. Pilar and his boss out by the concessions area. There's an existing bathroom facility, septic field, and so forth out there. They had a contractor, he dug everything up so that they could see where it was, because there was nothing on file at the county, and they have blessed that as well. So there are no issues as far as septic goes with any of the facilities out there. So, there are no issues as far as septic goes with any of the facilities out there. But I'll answer any questions as you go through the process here.
I have one, you know, for safety path, you do have plans to go all the way up there, right?
The plan is, yeah, ultimately to get it all the way to Baldwin Road, it's one of our master plans, you know, we have several of them throughout the township. As Mr. Davis said, right now, we're only to Dunlop, we're working on a segment from Dunlop to Sanders right now. And then we'll just kind of do it incrementally down, you know, in segments. If money falls from heaven, that would be great, and we would build it right away, but, you know, bar any type of millage approval or something, it's gonna be a while before it gets out there, in my opinion, so...
So, the waiver then, when you figure it out, you'll probably come from the east side, over near Kids' Kingdom, right?
Yeah, they're gonna have to build an extensive boardwalk through that marsh.
Right, exactly.
So, yeah.
So, the waiver, though, that does what exactly? Will just postpone it until such time, or how does that get defined?
The waiver itself, I mean, you can define it any way that you want, you can say that they have to pay for it once the path makes it out to the park, you know, that they would have to pay for it at that time, at those dollars, I think you can just waive it. I would have to look at the ordinance and see if this is something you waive, or if the Safety Path Committee, if this has to go to the Safety Path Committee for like a formal...
We've done it in the past, I think it goes to the safety, we did it at the patch farm.
So I think you kind of make the recommendation to waive it here, and then it would have to go to the Safety Path Committee, and they would do the final waiver, I guess.
I would just stress to the commission that we maintain the safety path, the Parks and Rec staff does, and we are the biggest proponent of health and safety. So, it's not something that we're gonna skip out in five, 10, 15 years, it's, it would be a huge asset to us at that time, but it's not gonna be an asset right now, using your bond dollars as a taxpayer, to put a trail that goes nowhere, that's just ludicrous, like I could put a set of swings or something in.
Okay, let's go to the planner's report then?
Yes. So yes, we did find the final site plan to be in general compliance with the zoning ordinance, there are a couple of items that could be addressed. We found that the proposed community center building meets the dimensional requirements. However, the location of the pavilion also appears to be in compliance with the setback requirements. However, the distances for the property lines have not been provided, so those should be provided and referenced. The, regarding access and circulation, we defer to fire chief for those turning radiuses and equipment provisions. Then, of course, we referenced the waiver requested for the, for the path that you're discussing here. Let me see. We did note that the customer parking spaces around the community center are deficient in their length by two feet, and so that we ask for them to be brought up to compliance, to the length of 20 feet. And we asked for information, parking information as well, to be provided around the pavilion and warming building. And I know that there is substantial parking around there as well, but specifics having to do with that portion of the site plan as well. Let's see. We found that the essential services and utilities information has not been provided for Site B, for that additional septic field that he was just referencing. That certainly should be addressed as well, however, you know that, and we would defer to you, so however we handle that, you give it a thumbs up, we're okay with that, too.
Okay.
Then the trash enclosure, there's an existing dumpster to be, to remain in use on the facility. However, details and pictures of the existing dumpster should be provided for administrative review to ensure that it meets the zoning ordinance standards. And that's it, I will say, however, and I know we referenced that the additional square footage could go administratively to be reviewed, and I, just off the top of my head, I know that the parking is substantial on-site, and so the additional square footage, barring any, you know, removing of landscaping or anything like that, the parking is sufficient for that as well, so I will mention that.
Any issues with meeting the extra parking requirement?
If I may, can I?
Yeah.
I'll respond to just some of those on the dimensional areas. The, the existing bathrooms are about 108 feet from the property line, it's shown on the plan, but it's like right in the corner there. So the new proposed pavilion is about 130 feet from the nearest property corner. And keep in mind, that's from the property corner, the gentleman's home is actually on Coates Road, so it's gotta be 500, maybe more feet away.
More than that, yeah.
Yeah, it's a long way away, but it's, it's over 100, it's about 130 feet to the new building there. Let's see, circulation, the fire department did have a letter dated July 11th, or July 18th,
Yep.
in which he said that both projects look good, no suggestions or comments at this time. The parking spaces, yeah, we, they're 18 feet because it matches what's adjacent to it, but we certainly have room that if we needed to stripe it out and make those 20 feet in the areas that Lauren is talking about, we could certainly do that. That won't be an issue or cause any problems to the, to the space or to the site as well. And, yes, Site B, the essential services, where the well works fine, and the septic has been approved by the health department, and I'll leave it to her on the dumpster, it's a vinyl dumpster, isn't it?
Not a metal dumpster. You mean the one up front?
No, the one back in the maintenance area out there.
Two, one at the office...
One at the office and one up front.
And they're...
Metal.
Eight yard...
And aren't they enclosed in the fencing back there? Oh, they're not, okay.
No, because you got to main, I mean, there's a long list of things, but in the winter when we move equipment around, that was, this is a logistical thing for us, so we'll work on it. It's not a shopping plaza, I mean, you've been out there during the operation, so it's, yeah.
One more thing from the fire chief, he did say he's gonna need a specific address.
Yeah, I told Pete we'd do Studio A, B, and C, administrative office, community center, senior center, and cable, R, A, B, C, and D.
Okay. That's it for the correspondence that I've got on that, is there anyone in the public wishing to speak about the final site plan? Okay, seeing none, commissioner comments?
Callie?
I've got a couple, I think our Parks and Rec does an outstanding job, I think they really have a lot of great creative ideas and, you know, energy going into the park. That being said, the taxpayers also end up having to carry what we do. And, you know, from a financial front, this is something that I really, I'm, you know, when I read the newspaper article, it says that, you know, the township has this extra money and they're gonna do that, I thought, well, no, that's kind of our money. I really thought that the citizens should have had a vote on something like this, because it's something that, you know, we could look back at later and go, wow, we didn't know it was gonna cost that much. I just feel like there's a lot of information I really would have liked to know, but that's, on a planning front, I feel like we were left out of the loop if this was the whole integrated plan, to do all this for a community that wants to maintain a rural feel, it's just, putting it all together. But still, you know, it's a nice project, and if we're gonna have to have it, you're gonna do a great job of putting it in there.
With all due, can I interject? If you read our master plan list, I've been here 23 years, every time it's senior center. When the township sold the vets hall, they put the cart before the horse. The money was to be used to build a community center, not a senior center, so now we have seniors who have no place to go. So, to say it's not an asset or a need in our community is wrong.
Well, I didn't say it wasn't an asset or a need, I said, I would have liked the residents, the citizens, to have more of a say in it.
I think they do every day when they speak, when they come to that park. And as far as being on the west side of the community, if you go to that park, if everybody comes out there on any given night, you'll see 1,000 people in that park, 1,000. That is the place to be Monday through Friday. So that park is the best place to have the senior center where we can program for them, they've never had program, they play cards. What about pickleball, tennis, and that type of stuff, so that's why it's gonna be located there.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold up the discussion because it's really on the do of the site plan. I know, this isn't a place to discuss...
No, you're not gonna hold up, I'm still talking, we haven't even got...
It's not a place to discuss where the money's coming from, that's, that's not what we're doing here tonight.
But I actually am allowed to complete my, my thought here, all right? And so my point is if we're going...
Remember, we're talking about a site plan. Okay?
May I speak?
Sure.
Okay. So, if we're going to have all this, and we're making it this focal point with the site plan, this is where I'm winding this all up, then this being a hub of activity, like you're saying, would really require the safety path to be there, and go out from there. Even if it's a little bit, you've got a lot of density in the subdivisions that are close by and nearby. And anytime we can get them off the road and onto a safety path and into the park, we should. So if we have the funds to put this in, we should have the funds to have a safety path where that's being put. Because we need to set a good example, that we're gonna have it in the front of this very busy road, where we will have kids biking in and people walking in, and try and encourage people to not use a car to go to a park when they're living close by. And so that's kind of my point with the finances, if we, if we really have the finances to do this, we should have the finances to put in that safety path on there. And so I wouldn't be in favor of waiving the safety path along Seymour Lake Road, I would say put it in. And either way, when we have an applicant come that, you know, comes that wants to defer the safety path, we'd make them put the funds up front. So either way, the funds would have had to have been put up front, so let's use the funds to put the path there.
Okay, to your point, if he comes out from the east end of Kids' Kingdom, and he brings it up to the road, there's no path that it's linking up to until, I'm not sure when it's planned for, to come all the way down.
There is...
That's what he's saying, he's putting a path to nowhere.
Right, and, and we're putting it in nowhere, instead of in the center of the community.
That's why he's saying, let's waive and save the money now.
So the whole integrated plan should have been to put a path to it, we've got the polyand trail down the road from there, and large subdivisions that are well within biking range. If water's down, and you have all of the village that are well within biking range to that park, I think the focus should be integrated with this park, it's a priority to put a safety plan, you know, path to it. And if the park is required to be in the front, or the funds be set aside for the front, either way, it's the same thing. If we have to set the funds aside, like we do to every other developer in the town, then put the path in.
I was gonna ask a similar question, I just wanted to support what you're, again, I'm not, I'm just asking the question.
That's fine.
If this was a private development, would we be allowing them to waive the safety path? The way I have been viewing all the government interaction, the meetings that go on, you know, day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year, when one government entity is doing something for another government entity, or having to pay for something, they transfer the funds over to their respective accounts. I mean, are we, again, I'm asking the question, if, because it's a public park and it's public money, we can give them a waiver, if it was a private entity, would be, would we be willing to give a waiver? Does the Parks and Rec have to transfer funds for the safety path over to the Safety Path Committee? Again, I'm just asking the questions, because I don't want...
If I may, a private individual is running a business making a profit.
I get, I get that.
Let me finish.
Yeah.
We're not making a profit, we're here to provide recreation. So to put a path in there, again, I chaired the safety path committee, the path that you put in there will deteriorate time you get a million dollars to spend to put that boardwalk through that swamp area. What good does that do?
I'm not disputing that part, I'm just saying if it was a private development, we would have them put the funds in escrow.
I mean, how many years did it go here in this township before there was a safety path here? I mean, it sat here for years, and I screamed about that, well, we're not gonna put it in because it leads to nowhere, okay? Now, if we were in town, I'd say absolutely, but what are you gonna make us put a path in? You can't get to it in a safe manner, either way, east or west. And it's gonna be five to 10 years before you get a path that far, just because of that boardwalk you gotta put in. We spent $60,000 just redoing our boardwalks in Powell Lake this year, and it's not even close to the magnitude of what that's gonna cost to go through that wetland area.
So we have, what, two choices, pay in lieu of or waiver?
Well, it's three.
Is that right?
There's three choices, enforce it, or waive the requirement that they put the money down in lieu of, or put the money in lieu of.
Right.
We've had a lot of dialogue here, would somebody reiterate what this waiver is supposed to do?
We're simply asking the Parks and Rec Commission not to be forced to put the safety path in on the road front edge of Seymour Lake Township Park, because it goes from A to B and nowhere else, it leads to nowhere. And again, we maintain all the safety paths, so if anyone's speaking about maintenance of safety paths, it's gonna cost the township more in the long run to maintain that than it will right now to put it in, over a course of 10 years, I assure you.
I can't, I totally agree with what you're saying, I'm just looking at the, the rules that we have in place here, to see if, if we're going to be doing anything that's gonna set up, I guess, whatever we do, it doesn't set a precedent in certain cases.
I think we're missing a step, it requires, a waiver would require that the money be set aside, be put in the account. What I'm hearing from you is a third option where the money's not even transferred.
I never said that.
Okay, so you're saying you would agree to the money being put in the safety path account to develop another section of safety path?
If that's what you choose, then we'll take it out of the bond money. I'm trying to save bond money and not have to put it in. Again, with all due respect, if that safety path gets to that point, do you honestly think the Parks and Rec Commission would invest to put that path across there? The biggest proponents of safety paths and recreation is us, that's ludicrous, we would never do that.
And I'm just offering a comment, to hook up to that, from that boardwalk to that isolated safety path, quote, to nowhere, would cost more money, too.
Yeah, and until Sharp engineer, whoever the township engineer goes out there and surveys that wetland, maybe it's cheaper to go around through Corial instead of doing that boardwalk, you know what I'm saying, where that marsh line is? So again, to put that in front of the park, when we don't, even though it's cost prohibitive to do right now, or is the county gonna straighten those curves out? It's just, me as a taxpayer, it's a waste of money, because it leads me to nowhere, it gets no one to my park on a bike in a safe manner. If nothing else, it puts up a false safety pretense.
Callie?
The reason I had talked about the finances before was really directly related to where this goes. When we go back or forward into the future here, and we look back at what it's gonna take to put that safety path in and complete it, which should have been done in the beginning, is when we go, why didn't we know those costs, how much was it gonna be? And that's what I'm saying, I wanna go in this wide, you know, with my eyes wide open, the safety path should be put in, that's, that's my belief, because you're bringing that into a center, and other areas aren't that far off, there's other safety paths that aren't that far off from there in subdivision.
The only thing I see about that, though, is that he could put a safety path, you know,
I could put it anywhere near there, but it doesn't link to anything, and it won't.
But we do that everywhere else, when we have a development, we make them put in that section. I go drive down Rochester Road every day, and there's patches of safety path, and they do get used, and then there's goat trails.
That is a housing development where you have families.
My point is, I wanna know the cost, and I wanna know what's gonna happen. If the mon, if that's how much it's gonna cost, I need to know that our community will be able to afford that and not be stuck with something later, and other expenses that go, well, we didn't know it was gonna cost that much. If we wanna integrate a path and we're gonna put that park there, and it has the polyand, and it has population densities on Baldwin, and all these other areas that are gonna draw to that park, I wanna encourage the use by non-motorized means.
Any other discussion? On anything else related to this plan?
Does the safety paths, the budget for the safety paths, does that come from your department, or is the safety path completely separate?
That's out of the general fund.
It's out of the general fund, but it's not from your...
Absolutely not.
Doesn't come from you.
Our millage is specifically for recreation development and park operation.
The word waiver, what does that mean in this context?
You can use waiver, you can, you can put to, you can put amendment to our approval, whatever you wanna do, but I'm just trying to be fiscally responsible here. I mean, think about it, it would be cheaper for us right now to put them in, in... I mean, think about it. It would be cheaper for us right now to put them in instead of 15, 20 years from now. But in 15, 20 years from now, the township just approved $100,000 last week, I think, or was it two weeks ago, to make safety path repairs. $100,000. So where are we gonna be with that path in 10 or 15 years? And again, if it's a housing development, I'm the first one that says put sidewalks and safety paths in. This isn't a housing development. It's going absolutely nowhere. Give me a neighborhood of substantial size close to that park on Seymour Lake Road. First one you come to, it's gotta be right across the street here, Oxford and whatever this is over here on Tam Lake. That's the first neighborhood of any size. Those other neighborhoods, Corial, they come through the back of the park. The subdivisions off Baldwin come through the back of the park. They have trails they use. And the ones off of Drainer, Drainer Circle, come off the back of the park.
Great Timbers. The Timber subdivision's right across there.
Grapevine.
Grapevine, yeah. That's a pretty big sub.
Yeah, it's on the, and that's on the other side of the road. And they already walked through the apartment complex or the condos to come to the park. There's already trails established there.
All right, keeping the safety path conversation out of this for a moment, is there anything else on the site plan that needs to be commented on or changed or questioned? Okay, so seeing as such, there's, one thing we have to resolve first before we can go ahead with the second thing maybe. Because then we're just gonna go rifle through a bunch of motions, is the way I see it. So we need to decide as a commission what we wanna do with either a waiver...
We break the safety path off, vote on the rest contingent on the safety path vote, and then, so we know it's in two sections. So at some point when the safety path gets ...
That's what I'm saying. I wanna get to this. If you wanna do the site plan first and...
Everything with the exception of the safety path and then any final thing would be contingent on the final of the safety path. I'm just trying to throw a way to break it down.
I was gonna go the other way. Let's get a consensus of what we're gonna do with the safety path.
Okay.
And then we can make a motion about, the motion can be with or without or with waiver. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Let's kinda get to a consensus of what we wanna do with that waiver for a non-waiver.
Money or path?
Put the money up front in lieu of?
Yeah.
Okay, that's her idea. What's yours, Eddie?
Wait a minute, we're gonna vote to put the money up front in lieu of or a waiver?
Or their choice not making...
She wants to put money in lieu of. She's gonna approve the site plan with the exception of the safety path. These can choose.
I would go for either putting the money in the fund or putting the safety path in. I would not approve not putting the money in the fund or not putting the safety path in without putting money in the fund. There's three choices. No path, no pay. Pay into the fund or path.
You lost me there.
There's three configurations.
No, I know. But is that how she's voting? Is that what...
This is her suggestion for us to come together. She's suggesting we make just a simple, you pay in lieu of. Don't put the safety path in because it doesn't make sense up front, like he says. But pay in lieu of, making sure the money's there when they go to do it. Whether it's $80,000 or $150,000. I don't know what it costs. Do we know?
I don't have the number in front of me.
She just wants to make sure that it's tracked.
Because normally when we do that pay in lieu of, it requires an engineering study to actually find out what it's going to cost. Then we have something that we know what it would cost to put that path in.
So that's what she's doing. She's guaranteeing the money.
And that money can be used for that or something else.
Well, again, if this was a private development, I would have no problem with that. I'm trying to understand. I know where he's coming from here. And, you know, it's public money. It's our money. It's our public money. And we're using it for public good. And I don't know what, you know, the best way to approach this, I don't know. Do we get in trouble as a commission to say to a government agency, you don't have to abide by the rules. We make everybody else abide by them? No?
No.
No? Okay.
But isn't it a recommendation to the safety path anyway so they can overrule you?
Okay.
Safety Path Committee, Tom Shapoor. I'm just saying it's a recommendation on the safety path.
So your opinion is you'd rather not?
Well, it's, I don't have a problem with the waiver.
Okay.
I'm just making sure we're not doing anything we're gonna get in trouble for.
I don't have a problem with the waiver because I feel that if they do put the safety path out front, people are still gonna go in the most effective way. Whether it's through the condo to development or through the new proposed east side entrance to the park, I don't think it'll be used. So I have no problem with the waiver.
So waiver, you're saying no funds, no path?
No, I'm saying that the waiver, as he is asking for today.
Yeah.
Okay, so the waiver would be no funds, no path?
No, yes.
Yeah. I tend to agree as well. So now if someone wants to make a motion saying that, then we can vote yes or no on the motion.
I have motions in front of me. We have an item four. They were all grouped together. But we can pull out the safety path. And so we can suggest that a motion will be that the Planning Commission approve the waiver for the eight-foot-wide safety path along Seymour Lake Road. I support.
Okay.
And can we specify by waiver? Because waiver in all our other planning commission meeting minutes meant that money would be put in lieu of.
Waiver means waiver. In the past, waiver means waiver in lieu of...
Money in lieu of.
Means that you're gonna give them the cash and not build it. So waiver is...
Waiver of the...
Waiver is as you're thinking, Kelly, no money, no construction. But the waiver is like it just goes away. It's not gonna be...
And no study of cost or anything.
Not gonna be required. There's no future costs or anything with, that's the waiver. We generally do either an in lieu of, a recommendation to put it in, well, actually, we don't recommend us put it in, it's in the plan, or we recommend to do it in lieu of.
We have to approve the community center.
Oh, yeah, my bad. Sure. Yes. Yes.
I need to resend that.
I don't think anyone seconded it.
Okay, good. Okay. I moved that the Planning Commission approve the final site plan for Seymour Lake Town Park 2795 Seymour Lake Road. This approval is based upon the finding that the final site plan meets the criteria for the site plan approval contained in Section 12.5 of the zoning ordinance. Further, this approval is conditioned upon the following: compliance with the Fire Marshal's report, any unresolved items contained within the Township Planner's Report dated July 18, 2018. It approves the additional 542 square foot to the community center to equal 6,136 square foot building extension. It approves the waiver for the eight-foot-wide safety path along Seymour Lake Road.
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
What about the requirements from the planner?
Yes.
That was in there.
That was in there. Okay.
Okay, I just...
The Fire Marshal's in there.
Yeah, I remember you saying that.
Fire chief.
I'll support.
Okay, just for wording, the waiver of the eight-foot-wide, the waiver of the requirement of the eight-foot-wide safety path along Seymour Lake Road.
We can add the...
Word requirement.
We can add the word requirement. So it will read, approve waiver requirement for the eight-foot-wide safety path along Seymour Lake Road.
Second, Pat?
I'll re-support.
Okay, any discussion on the motion as read? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, motion passes.
All set.
Good luck, good building. Yep.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let's move to item 11, Communications and Committee Reports. Item one, the EDC, I can tell you it didn't meet that month. I'm not sure whether the planning to meet next month either. I have not heard yet. Ordinance Review Committee, Mr. Almerich or Noel?
We did not have a meeting.
Did not have a meeting. Are you planning one for next month?
Yes, the ninth.
Okay.
At 12 noon.
Okay.
High noon.
You're by one. Item 12, Planner and Engineering Reports. Mr. Sharp, anything in addition?
Let Ms. Carlson go first. She's item A.
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a little funny on mine. So I just, I just go down the line. I'm sorry.
No problem. No. No comments.
Okay, Mr. Sharp?
We had a little bit of a snafu again, as Kelly brought up earlier with the county with equalization and a deed being recorded on the hills of, it's going to be known as the Hills of Manitou. It's a development that you guys had previously approved back in about 2015. So anyway, these legal issues finally got cleaned up. And so I would anticipate that the developer is now going to be able to close on the property and you'll probably be seeing a new site plan for that coming through.
All right.
We've been in discussions with them and they asked if they could continue with the same one. We said, no, it's too old. You gotta come back, you know, you gotta start over again. I heard that there might be a new layout or something. And likewise, there's a lot of talk out there about certain projects around the community and it just, you know, we've had some pre-apps with people and just waiting, you know? It just seems like it wants to happen. I don't know if it's the economy or what's going on. People aren't sure. But I think that there's a few out there that you could see come through pretty quick.
I do have a question about okay cars or used cars or whatever it is on...
Clean cars.
Clean cars, is it? Yeah. Burger King site?
Yep.
That's still going, right?
Still going. We approved the engineering plans. They just needed to get approval from MDOT. There's some work that they were doing in there right of way there. And we haven't seen anything from that. Once they get that approval from MDOT, we can have, you know, have our pre-construction meeting and they can get going on their parking lot and so forth. I know they've been doing work on the building.
Yeah.
You can see it out there. But no, it's still going. As far as I know, they're just waiting on that one approval.
All right. Looked like it stalled to me a little bit there, so...
Yep.
Okay, good. With that, bring us to item number 13. I will adjourn this meeting at 8:06. Thank you.